I didn't hear from me the one about Cody might be coming for wrestling practice though.
We are now on recording. It's six twenty seven.
Help me if I suppose all of them.
Oh sure, tell me, sure.
Hang heavy nowhere.
How do you get it?
Dean.
Good.
Hello?
Hi. They said I didn't have to come to play hands on you.
No, that's what.
Yeah, but you got kicked out.
I mean, I don't know if it's part of the meantime.
That's right.
You're gonna do the summer and we. Yeah, yeah, it's supposed to, well, I heard not until around nine ish. So also we get him on.
He was just even a little bit earlier.
Alright, it is six thirty, uh, we are here at the Swisher regular meeting in the library. We'll be, please take roll. Klein.
Here.
Enid.
Here.
Poojil.
Roder.
Here.
Stag.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'm on the level. Public comment, uh, please note number six is a public hearing, so if you wish to talk about number six, just wait until you're there, otherwise anything is open for public comment.
Uh, what's the, can I talk or is this your phone?
You can tell.
Okay, um, what's the deal on the snow plow? And I know that, I know the snow plow was, uh, one of them was done, was down or whatever, but, um, I've got about five or six calls or texts wanting to know that. Couple guys were asking if, uh, Division Street's the only one we're worried about. But just bringing that to your guests' attention, and I know, I know he's, I know it was a once in a twenty year storm and everything, but the roads are absolutely horrible down right now.
Did they give simple one text? Mm-hmm.
There's only like, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot of streets in Swisher you can barely, you almost gotta stop and let one car go through because you can't even get two vehicles through. I just think there's a, we can't, we can't blame the storm on everything. We've got, somebody's gotta get out there and get the, get the streets white and move, move the snow back or remove some of it or something. I mean, when, I mean, we all work for the citizens of Swisher. If they're concerned about it and everything else, and obviously there's more than just, uh, Kenny Feldman, there was, I think there's a lot of people that were, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just telling you guys that something's gotta be done with the streets right now because this is, it's, the streets are absolutely ridiculous right now. I know it's, I know it was a bad storm, very, very bad storm. I'm not, not saying that, I'm just saying that it's been five, six days of people barely able to get through streets and stuff, but it's starting to take a lot of people off.
Do you know the issue of the street? Is there any reason why, like, last couple days, the streets he did saw, it's all, it's all mush and stuff? Is there any reason that he can't take and plow it off to the sidewalk that's soft before it freezes again?
Well, keep in mind it wasn't soft until today.
Uh, no, last weekend it was soft.
I did speak to him. He is planning on sanding tomorrow after the snow is done because they didn't want to sand and then have everything pushed off and just sit on the side of the road and then have to go through and sand again. Uh, Division Street is their number one priority because it affects more than just our city, so we do need to keep that as clear. I know he was out last week digging out, um, sewer drains. There are quite a few in our neighborhood that were done. I assume he was up in the other neighborhood doing those as well. He also hit a bunch of the corners where the school buses are affected, um, because we had to make sure that the school buses could get through. With everything that happens, there isn't a whole lot of room to put the snow, um, shoving it into people's yards. Yes. I know different people do have life chat because it does destroy their, um, their lawns and they didn't want that, so they have been trying to be more cognizant of where they are plowing and how they are plowing. But you're right, we do need to get streets more clear. And I'm sure that if anyone has any suggestions, Justin would be open to listening to them.
Well, if we're undermanned and can't, if they're, they're working too many hours to get them done, what's the, why can't we hire that out?
I can speak to that. We had in our budget this past year for this coming season to hire a third person, which we do every year to help clear snow. This year, we had nobody apply for that position.
I'm, I'm talking about hiring a private contractor then.
We, we've had to do that in the past, have somebody come in here to help in various situations. This time, when the snow hit.
None of the contractors were taking any extra work because it was all picked up by the state.
Who'd you guys all call then, if you guys know, but not over taking, or taking, like, who are all, who are all contracted with all?
I don't know, they'll be called, no.
How many?
I'm sure we could probably have a list of people we can call.
Yeah, we can check with Justin, I'm not sure.
But hired a hard time, we don't have any equipment for the drive, do we?
Well, we got.
We don't have a truck?
No, we got the truck fixed.
It's bad.
Yeah. And they have.
But what that is, is terrible, if you have three people pushing the snow, we're out of the.
What they don't drive?
Well, we do have a skid motor.
People need to take breaks.
Brakes too.
People need to sleep versus means that you have additional people, more people are out on the road. We would absolutely love to have a third person, nobody wanted the job.
But that's, but that's something every year that we've, we've done in the past. And this particular year, we haven't had anybody step up where they applied for it or wanted to help out with it.
Have you guys thought about, like, before the season hits, like, contracted with a private one to have them as a backup? Instead of waiting for all the twenty inches of snow is on the ground?
Keep in mind, you've seen our budget. Contractors cost much.
But I also think, I mean, like we're all saying, this is like a once in a whatever storm, but like, if we do get, you know, more than six, seven inches, which that happens frequently, to have that in place rather than dealing with issues we're dealing with now, I think it's a lot wiser for us moving forward.
Right.
Because like, it has been a week. And I, Swisher View Drive, I drive down, and that's one car only. That, to me, is unacceptable. I mean, that's, but I, I, and that's the thing, like, you know, one of my best friends owns a business that does snowplow. I was like, well, his guys last week, I mean, he didn't go home for a week, but that's the nature of this beast of having a once in a fifteen year storm that we're gonna have to, you know, pay overtime and do that to get this town, but like, waiting a week and it still isn't there? I mean, if that's the issue, then we need to look at outside if we can't with our manpower handling. And I get the third person didn't apply, so we need to find an alternative. We can't just say, well, we tried, or we didn't, we have to have an answer for it.
That's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, to Cody's point, that's the same as like when you guys go out and bid, when we go out and bid something and we say we want to get three bids and we only get one person to bid.
Right.
That's, that's unacceptable. I mean, in, in the real world, like, I guarantee you, Adam or me or anybody that's happened to get, if our boss tells us to go out and get three bids before we do anything, you gotta get three bids.
Well, staff is sick in it often on too.
What's that?
The staff is sick often on, that's what it's, so that's why some of that stuff is not got done.
Can you work with Justin to contact, to contact some contract companies and see what their, sort of, on call? There's possibilities. Other comments? Alright, moving on to number four, approval for consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Just vote.
Thank you, W.
Second.
Second by Daryl. Cause it's in our favor, okay. Uh, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Got it, said it, thank you. Uh, number five, certificates of appreciation. And now we got some people here. Dean?
Yeah.
Oh, give me a picture?
I guess, yes. Okay, I'll probably make us look.
Was, like, what, sixteen years?
Do you want lots?
I was surprised.
It was.
Yeah.
Long time.
Six.
It seems like a lifetime, so. Thank you, guys.
It's been a pleasure to work with you.
Gary.
My good job.
Oh my God, you're up here too.
Wow, S T U.
It's perfect.
I'm on Rita.
Thanks, guys.
And I got a thing because Alison won't be attending, but she asked me to accept it for, so I have it here. And, but she wanted to say, um, thank you for the thought to recognize her time. And she says she enjoyed her time on the commission and learned a lot alongside some very smart people. It was her pleasure.
That was very nice.
So how many current people do we have on planning, though?
Not enough.
Four.
We only have four.
So we would all have to be present in order to.
We still haven't posted that there's open positions.
Mm-hmm. Yep. On the website, you can go on Facebook.
If you have any recommendations or ask people, please, we would need it.
It's like, I guess, what happens if we start hitting a point where routinely we only get three?
We can't be.
With seven, with seven positions.
No, no, I get that.
You have to have four.
What I'm saying is if routine, or let's say one more person says, I don't want to do this anymore.
We're not gonna have anything until we get somebody appointed.
Like, I didn't know if, like, council done steps and, uh.
No.
No.
Uh, keep in mind, it is required that we try to find gender balance on all of our boards. So if you know, um, females, talk them up, encourage them to apply. That is a requirement. It does mean that if we cannot find additional females, we could potentially have more males females, but we are supposed to do our due diligence to keep it as balanced as possible.
Is that mandatory?
Yep. Gender balance.
So if you can't get the gender balance.
Then you can appoint.
You could potentially have to wait to fill some of the positions to see if you could find.
You post it for ninety days and then after that, which we've had posted two P and Z members for over ninety days. Um, so that would be fine, but you have to have it posted for ninety days to get the gender balance. Um, we're just included for the one that, for Kenny now that's included in there. But the other ones, we've had that posted for a while, so.
Yeah, cause we need two people working on, yep. Alright, we will move on to six, the public hearing for the fringe area agreement between the city of Swisher, Johnson County and the city of Cedar Rapids. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion open.
By Adam.
Second.
Second by Mike. Uh, public hearing is open at six forty-three. Discussion. How long have you worked on this?
Oh mercy, I do.
Over a year, right?
More than a year, it's been a couple of years, um, if not more. Cause first we were doing more Tarnegrant, Mike's Stag and Mary Moon Call. We finally got that ironed out. Then we've been dealing with Cedar Rapids and us in Johnson County, and that's been a couple of years, if not more. It's, and I just told him, I kept emailing, has your attorney Cedar Rapids, has your city attorney looked at this? Has your attorney looked at this? Cause Johnson County had confirmed and we had looked at, and finally, I says, I want this done before I retire. So, yeah. We promise, this is okay.
How long is the fringe area agreement for? Do you know?
No.
How is this different from the previous agreement?
Well, this is with, we used to have an agreement with Johnson County, C D, Cedar Rapids, and that. And that expired, even though we tried to get them ahead of time, and no. They didn't respond.
How was this last clip?
She's gonna tell us.
She's looking into that.
Yeah.
What happened was Johnson County wanted us to, at, at first, they wanted us to work with Cedar Rapids on an annexation agreement. And then we talked about doing this fringe area agreement. And it was decided to, to put all three parties in, again, to redo it. Where before, didn't we just have one with the county?
And we would be rescinding the one we have with the county now, and this will take place of that with the county and Cedar Rapids.
And a lot of this, I think the reason Cedar Rapids is included in this now is because of the stretch that they're starting to come down into our area. And because of the agreement that we got with them on the annexation and now because of the vicinity of, vicinity of them being within the Swisher border a lot closer, it just made sense to include all three parties.
I don't see where it has a sunset or a date anywhere in there. So it's good until somebody.
Everyone will say this one does.
I don't see anything there.
If you don't want.
I don't see anything.
You don't see anything?
I don't.
It's in the packet, right? Did anyone see, else see anything? I didn't see a thing. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see a term date on it.
Okay, here it is. This agreement shall be effective, at, um, effect for ten years after the day of the execution, with review after five years at the request of the chair of the Johnson County Board Supervisor, the mayor of the city of Swisher, or the mayor of the city of Cedar Rapids. This agreement may be modified or extended by the written mutual consent of all parties.
What age?
Review after five years.
Oh.
Section two.
Okay. So basically ten years then, just reviewed after five, okay. Five years, we will, they're different. Cedar Rapids has been a.
Don't want to do it, I'm not, we've had a couple of years of the moratorium agreement already, haven't we?
Yes, it's been two years, I think.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, roughly two years. So there's roughly eight years of, um.
Which we were doing all of my Zoom meetings because of COVID.
Uh, other discussion. Uh, all entertaining motions, close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Uh, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Eyes have it, close public hearings at six forty-seven Peta.
Time, time.
Uh, number seven, resolution, uh, to consider approving a fringe area agreement between the city of Swisher, Johnson County, and the city of Cedar Rapids.
Motion to approve fringe area agreement?
Motion by Cody.
Second.
Second, um, my hurt. Uh, we need to do a roll call, please. Klein.
Aye.
Hi Nick.
Aye.
Poojil.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stag. Thank you. Uh, is this one of the ones that we do through, or you just do that? Yep. That's very nice. Uh, moving on to eight, consideration of resolution, reviewing professional service agreement with Dorsey and Whitney out of Des Moines for nine thousand dollars for preparing legal proceedings for the SRF loan and general obligation loan for the sewer improvement project.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Cody.
Second.
Second by Mike. Can we get a roll call, please? Enid.
Here, aye.
Poojil.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stag.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to nine, consideration to fix, is date it? No, that's for the, the legal proceedings from Dorsey and Whitney, that's how it needs to be ordered. To fix a date for public hearing, uh, proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement to borrow money there under, in the principal amount not to exceed, uh, the four hundred and thirty thousand.
Would, uh, I see you ignored the contract for three point five million. This for contingency, uh, unexpected contingencies?
Engineering, legal fees, and contingency.
Combination.
Now, does that include, uh, no, that, that's just for the sewer?
It's strictly on the sewer project.
Yeah.
Not on the water line.
It's on the revenue.
Just on the.
It's the revenue, okay.
Yep.
So this, so this is just a set of public hearing.
Correct.
I motion we set public hearing date for February first meeting, February.
Yep. February twelfth.
Second.
So motion by Mike, second by Adam. Can I get a roll call on that, please? Poojil.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stag.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Kynan.
Aye.
Thank you. Number ten, uh, consideration of resolution to set a public hearing and additional action on proposal to enter into a general obligation loan agreement and to borrow money there under in a principal amount not to exceed, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. That's for the one.
Hearing on February twelfth.
Thank you, Cody.
Second.
Second by Mike, can we get a roll call, please? Roder.
Aye.
Stag.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Enid.
Nate.
Poojil.
Aye.
Uh.
That's just for the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, did you have more info on eleven? So, yeah, um, we were waiting to hear from, um, Dorsey and Whitney because, um, Mark Rolston, the Forest Ridge developer, was looking for, and I'm quoting here, development agreement. Um, and we were, Tony and I were under the impression he was looking for a draft development agreement that had to do with the TIF, um, reading. And come to find out, I think it was one Thursday afternoon or Friday, that that was not what he wanted. Um, he wanted a developer's agreement. So, um, and I think there was some talk about, you know, just like payload or something like that, right? Cause that's where he's developed. So, um, we were gonna look into it, he was gonna send us something he never did. I think you or I, I don't know, who came across the one lake from, like, Lake Rose subdivision? And so I emailed that to Mark saying, hey, is this some, is this kind of what you're looking for? He said, yep, exactly it. I was like, well, Tony, who did we have prepare this? Development agreement? We're talking back from two thousand and six, right?
Right.
Nobody can really recall, checked with our city engineer, no, they don't do that. Checked with Dorsey and Whitney, no, you don't want us to do that because it would be tens of thousands of dollars for us to do it. Um, check with your city attorney, email the city attorney. In the meantime, Mark had emailed back saying something about getting everybody together on TIF. And I'm like, is he? So it was getting very confusing. I did get a, a draft from Dorsey and Whitney on the TIF agreement. We do have that, um, but waiting from our city attorney to see if it's something he can draft on, uh, like, it's called it really a subdividers agreement, subdividers development agreement, which kind of lays out, you're gonna put in this bu, you know, possibly a buffer, or this wide of streets, or you're gonna put in a storm detention pond, or, you know, you're gonna, um, follow the, the city's code book on the subdivision requirements. So, kind of, in talking with Mark when he had emailed back, trying to get the TIF people together, I'm like, oh boy. I think we're all getting confused here, so I actually called him, and he's like, no, can we all just get together? We need to talk about what the requirements of the city are gonna be, and that's what this subdivision or subdividers agreement lays out. Um, so he asked that we can all, I don't know if the full council wants to get together or if you want to kind of, um.
Why didn't we just attend tonight to discuss this?
It, it honestly, it's something that we just talked about this afternoon at what, five?
Did, did we have to have a development agreement when, uh, Aaron put in the condos and everything? Which, couldn't we go back to that?
I have more with you.
I don't recall. To me, as far as what, what codes and stuff they should be following to do all this development, they should be going by what our SUDAS requirements are. And the engineering firm should be in touch with them, telling them, this is what Swisher standards are for.
And which he knows.
He knows that, he understands that, is there any others special?
So, okay, but that's, that's what I'm wondering.
I think maybe where he's thinking of all, like, I'm, I'm sure he's realized he has to follow our codes, right?
He does.
I think what he's probably, and I can speak for him, obviously, I don't know yet, but when we were talking about the underground tanks, based on his current layout that they had, they were like a hundred feet short of those requirements. So I think he is basically, wants to put an agreement in place beforehand to say like, alright, are you going to modify your ordinance to maybe extend it instead of, you know, every house has to be within a thousand feet to say, every house has to be within twelve hundred feet, maybe.
That was one of the points.
I think that's a lot of point for him because if we would extend that out by a hundred feet or whatever, I think it would reduce him having to put in one whole tank.
It doesn't even have to do that, you can amend or when the developer agreement state that, I'm sure he's got it broken down into phases, and what he's looking at is not to do two of those tanks on phase one to have such a huge hit. You know, it would be, he'd have to do the tank in stage two, which would then cover phase one and it would still mean all of our.
Requirements.
Requirements. It would be the exemption to allow him not to install that until phase two of his project. So we still would meet code once phase two goes in, but.
Okay, but that, if, you know, if that's what, if he's intended to ask questions like that, I agree that maybe he needs to come into a council meeting and say, hey, I got these issues that I need to address. How should I move forward on it?
Well, that's.
And that's, and that's something, you know, that we would have to take into advisement, like with the fire department and what they were saying they needed for requirements for the location of these and how much footage, footage from one to the next or whatever.
And I get their requirements, but install, installation of any tanks is better than what they currently have. For us to like say, every house has to be within a thousand, I mean, we're really looking more so that they're able to fill up out of these two to help assist them wherever, um, so, I mean.
Have we turned back from the fire department? Yes. I haven't called the fire department. I have no idea if they haven't contacted us.
You know, when you're first meeting with them?
Yeah. What, uh?
We need to contact the fire chief procedure.
Who does the maintenance on those tanks?
The city, on both of them, once they're installed.
So who's gonna require, who's gonna make sure that four, every film?
Didn't the fire department say they'll use them for training, so they'll be able to help with the maintenance and refilling? They, didn't they talk about that last year?
I don't remember.
They gonna use those for training in the middle of the, where all houses are?
And, just to fill.
Just to fill and extract training and probably procedure unloading their trucks out of those tanks and since those tanks will be used to support.
And again, those are things that probably will be laid out later agreement, joint training.
Right, absolutely, that part of, that should be in the agreement.
That's what I'm saying, made, to have made a table.
Correct. Yeah, it was never gonna be the solver, once they put them in.
Well, you're down the road by ten years from now, it's gonna be forgotten about, nobody's gonna be doing it.
Can we reach out to the fire department, see where they are with the distance and get some more clarification on how they're going to help maintain the tanks in the future?
Then we think that they're.
Then we think that this is the one, the deal and then.
Yeah. I'm just, I, and again, I am city.
It would be a good idea to talk to Chueville, where they put them in.
See what they do.
And see what they do.
Doesn't our fire department cover that area too?
Yep.
Yeah, so they would know.
So it'd be good to talk to them and also talk to Chueville, cause if they have an agreement that they're, maybe that's something you wanna look at. Bring in your. I guess I would assume if they drain one of those tanks, they're responsible for filling it, I guess.
Right.
Yeah, you're not gonna have that community of homeowners want their well bill pumped out probably ten for ten, twelve thousand gallons to refill that tank.
It's a thirty thousand gallon tank.
Well, right, it's a thirty, you know, that's.
They'll bring the Aquifer.
But yeah, we're gonna drain the Aquifer and here's your electric bill.
Do you want us to set a special meeting, you have Mark and the fire department and city engineers here, or do you just want all of this at a regular meeting? All this discussion on any or anything?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I think with this development, I, I mean, I know there's a pretty highly contested issue within our community of how people feel about it. So I want it in a regular meeting where everybody knows every detail that's going into this. I don't want there to be like a closed door meeting where like two or three of us meet with Mark and then people think, no, I want it all. I agree with Cody that we should get it in, and then we should, we should notify all parties that are involved and get them in here for that meeting.
Well, I think it's kind of, we'll try to coordinate what, what maybe everybody can show up. Do you wanna see if we can't get it on the twelfth, or do you wanna push it to the end of February where we have.
I was twelfth agenda looking, cause we're sitting on stuff, right? That's where I'm thinking.
First meeting is always one.
Maybe move it to the second one in February? That would be a better idea. Because I, I have a feeling this conversation will be a lively conversation.
Yeah.
Yep. I mean, I'm not gonna be one to wanna have a three hour meeting next, or two weeks.
Do you need another insight from council? Anything else from council on the. All right, moving on to twelve, investment policy review. Um, the investment policy, it's just something we have to review. Uh, does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns on our investment policy?
How do you set the limits, maximum amount for each depository?
We had contacted the banks.
You said that, they, they set it? What, uh, what kind of insurances, municipal funds now? Is that just all from the state? I know it's not FDIC. I remember back in the late sixties when the savings and loans went under. When I retired from the bank twelve years, but we were still paying assessment on that. It's from like sixty, about sixty-nine or seventy, somewhere around that time they went under.
Well, so, yeah, it wasn't.
See, banks, banks have, they assess every bank for the savings loan, I don't know what they do about municipal.
I'm not for sure, we'd have to find out.
Cause you know, if, I, I, I'm sure we would have five million set for extended period of time at any one bank, but, you know. It'd be quite a loss, it, it's getting, but, but, I don't know if that's, if that, if, if the state has assessed, assessment on all banks, I don't remember, I've been on the way for too long.
Yeah, I, you know, find out.
What's that?
There's gotta be insurance on it, can't.
Trouble is, with banks.
No, I'm just saying you would want it, is what I'm saying.
I don't know if you can get it, that's my point.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying.
I don't know what they do with municipal funds.
So can we pull that aside and turn next?
You're not doing anything with it, you're just reviewing it. It's just, uh, I mean.
Well, you know, we, we're gonna have this, we'll put money somewhere, but we, just for our own, you know, like sleep a little bit, if we, we have some kind of a backup, we can go on. If you have to pay for a beer or something.
Probably sleep a lot, I don't know.
All right. Thirteen, set a public hearing, uh, for Monday, February twelfth, uh, to amend our chapter for central business, commercial districts by adding the zoning DC one.
Well, it's adding
in VC one only.
Yeah.
To that.
Single family showing. Yeah, can only be in.
Motion to set public hearing coverage.
Thank you, Cody, second by Adam.
We can discuss it then.
All in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Uh, fourteen, set public hearing for Monday, February twelfth to the city code, rezoning for one twenty-two Rose Avenue. Anyone want to motion?
I got a question first.
Both of them, we gotta get both of them, we're setting it on both. Oh, I didn't see that. And one twenty-five Second Street.
Good question. Have you seen the wording that the planning zoning was input so that the individual on Second Street is protected?
Not yet, we've talked to the attorney, we're waiting to hear back from him.
That would be for the public hearing, that would be for tonight.
Sorry?
The wording affects the public hearing, not tonight.
No, I know, I know that, but I mean, have, have they done anything on it? Cause I know they agreed to, at the planning zoning meeting, I was at, they agreed to.
I think the recommendation that attorney, that you, that the council, you know.
I know, they were going to go back to the attorney, I wanna make sure they don't.
They don't, they don't.
Have you done it?
Yeah, I've called the zoning, yeah, I've called the city attorney and he's working on.
Okay.
And he'll have it done before the public hearing?
I hope so. I'm not gonna guarantee any city attorney.
It's not, you just.
Right.
Correct.
Motion to set public hearing.
Thank you, Adam.
Second.
Second by Kirk. All those in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Uh, I will maintain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Of course.
Second.
Second by Adam. All those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are now adjourned at seven oh five.